All right, good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation led by Pastor Michael McDaniel of Northeast Missionary Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Matt Hinkle. Please stand as you are able.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. The word declares that it's the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you for these men and women who represent these wards, but more importantly, represent the hearts and the voices of your people. We pray, God, that you would give them guidance, that they may hear, that they may share, that they may care in a deep way. And so, Father, we pray now that you would just watch over them and keep them. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we have no items from Office of the Mayor. We have no items from Council, so we're already at item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got several reports that are on today. Don't really have any formal presentations on any of them, just noting that on the, on the sales tax report for February, that sales tax was at 2.3%. That's right where we are for the year as well. So, 2.3% for, for the month, but 2.3% year-to-date. Total sales and use tax, use tax was down slightly, but total sales and use tax were about $400,000 over projections, or below projections right now. And if you remember, at one point, we were a few million dollars over projections. And so, all of that's coming back in line with the expectations, still projecting to finish around 2% growth for the year. And so, we'll keep monitoring that, keep an eye on that. But it's, it seems like sales tax is getting back to where we kind of anticipated that we'd be in the second half of the year. On the, we also have the revenue enforcement report is on, and this is just a regular report that we do to the Council with work that our Treasurer's Office does to ensure that we're collecting revenues that are due to the city. Appreciate the work of the Treasurer's Office in that. And then, we have our transfer report, the budget transfer report. There are certain administrative transfers that I'm authorized to approve within our budget. This just gives you an update of all those, all those changes that are made. So, if you look at those and have any questions about a specific transfer, we're glad to answer those. That's all that I have.
All right, thank you. All right, item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. What's that? Oh, how do you wish to vote, Councilman Carter? All right, passes unanimously. All right, now we're at number seven, requests for uncontested continuances. There's nothing on the, listed on the agenda, but what do you have, Mr. City Manager?
We just have a couple of items this morning, starting on page 12, on 11P1, Unsecured Structures. Item F will strike from the agenda. It's 1301 Northwest Fifth Street. The owner has secured. And if you go down to item 11, Q1, Abandoned Buildings, item E, 1301 Northwest Fifth Street, will strike from the agenda for the same reason.
Okay, that's it. All right, thank you. All right, now we're at item eight, Revocable Permits and Events. Item A is a revocable permit with the Heartland Racing Company for the Go Girl Run OKC on March 23rd. We have someone here, but only for questions. I don't know if we have any. The wards affected are not in the room, so we can just take a motion from anyone who wishes to make it. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Yeah, we'll have, okay, so we'll have to skip item B and come back to it. Item C is a joint revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and the Bodies Race Company to hold the Time to Patty 5K, 10K, and Half Marathon. That is in Ward Four. Councilman Stone. No one has signed up to speak. No one has signed up to speak. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll go back to item B. I am a very small owner of McNelly's Group LLC, and so, I'm going to step out and let Councilman Vice Mayor Carter handle this. And Vice Mayor Carter, I'm going to hand you a slip. There is one person who has signed up to speak on item B. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Council. How are you doing today? My name is Brian Pittman. I'm with McNelly's Oklahoma City. My address is 2740 Northwest 21st. I'm here to talk about our 15th Annual St. Patrick's Day Block Party. This is, like I said, it's our 15 years, 15th year we're going to be doing this, that same event, basically, stuff. It's going to be just north of the traffic circle at 10th and Walker, and going up to the 11th Street there, just to the east side of our pub that we have in James McNelly's. The one kind of thing we, it falls on a Sunday this year, so we're actually going to actually do two days this year for the first time. So, I'm a little nervous about this, but I don't know how I'm going to get sleep or stress. But we're going to do two days this year, so both Saturday and Sunday, we're going to have the event going on for those days. We'll have, providing both food, also beer and alcohol, and also some live music outside also for both of those days. We've got extra security we brought in for this event also, just like we normally do, and all the extra amenities, and also when it comes to extra porta-potties and also stuff, and kind of basically provide all the amenities we can have for it and stuff. So, that's Saturday and Sunday, hopefully good weather and stress.
Wonderful. Sounds like you've got it all kind of ready to go. Any questions? Okay, with Ward Six not being here, I'll take a motion. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your vote. And the item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you again, everybody else.
Appreciate you, Mr. Pitt. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now, we're back on item D. This is ratifying and approving a joint revocable permit with the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust and the Bodies Race Company to hold the Couple Shuffle 5, 10K at Lake Hefner. This involves Wards One, Two, and Eight. No one has signed up to speak, but anybody is welcome to jump in if they want to make a motion or make a comment.
I see it's retroactive, so I guess we already had the 5K on that, so I'll move for approval.
That's interesting. Okay, sounds good. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll recess the Council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through D we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we'll adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B we could take with one motion. I have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we'll adjourn OC PPA and reconvene as the Council. We're on item nine, the Consent Docket. There are no scheduled presentations today on the Consent Docket, but if there's something that a Council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote or separate comment, now would be the time to mention that.
Yes, item BB, just wanted some clarification and understanding of what this actually is.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, and I think I've already spoke with our Council staff to invite Public Works to speak about the preliminary design report on AF, please.
Okay.
And then, AG as well. And AH.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we'll start there then with those three items. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, so AF is a bridge replacement at North May over Northwest Expressway. It's from the 2017 bond. You all might remember, it's, the bridge has collapsed in 2016, and so, I think we have some good news on some progress with this project.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Debbie Miller with the Public Works Department. This is a 2017 bond project that we have been doing preliminary analysis on, and we came up with four different options. The first option is a diverging diamond, which is the one that is being recommended. We do have ACOG funding that will help assist on this particular option. We also looked at a clover leaf with intersections and reconstructing the ramps, a diamond interchange with signalization at May and the ramps, and then another option with roundabouts instead of a signal. So, we hope to have the final plans in late 2024 and begin construction in 2025.
I think that's great, and I appreciate you showing, sharing these plans with me recently. So, anyone who wants to see those, those are actually attached to the agenda at AF under the preliminary report. I'll show, share them on social media as well. I also just want everyone to know a conversation I'm having with Director Miller, which, congratulations in public, public. I got to congratulate you in public, but now from the horseshoe, so it's quite the feat you've accomplished. But I just want everyone to know that a lot of the conversation I'm really interested in around this bridge is its connectivity through pedestrian safety onto Northwest Expressway. I don't mean onto the street on Northwest Expressway. I actually mean creating sidewalk connectivity to the sidewalks we've been implementing on Northwest Expressway. So, imagine being able to walk from Target at Expressway at May and be able to safely go down onto the sidewalk infrastructure we would create onto Northwest Expressway to get to the BRT station, for instance, in front of the Oak, right? So, I'm very excited about that. And then, there's some more sidewalks I learned from Director Miller on May Avenue, all the way up to 63rd Street, so.
Yes, we have a couple of other preliminary reports in here that do address the Northwest Expressway and tying into May and going over on the west side of Hefner Parkway.
So, I just, this is just wonderful news, and so, I just really applaud this effort, and I'll look forward. When might me, when might we anticipate the next phase of a design report?
Final plans are expected for the sidewalk projects in, this summer, and so, we hope to begin this fall on both of those projects.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item BB, Councilwoman Nice.
Just wanted some explanation. I know as we see it within how it is listed in our agenda for the public to understand what is taking place.
Our, our city charter requires us to get a public official's bond for our City Manager, our City Treasurer, and our two Assistant City Treasurers, just based on the, the work that they perform and the amount of authority that they have. And this is just our annual renewal of, of the public official bond for the City Manager.
All right, well, that concludes the items that had been pulled out for separate discussion on the Consent Docket. We can now adopt the items as a group. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10, the Concurrent Docket. We have items A through N we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, we're at item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 8109 South Council Road from RMH 2 to Jumble A. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 9735 West Memorial Road from PUD 1551 and PUD 1742 to PUD 1986. Councilman Carter, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, subject to this, the summary of technical evaluations, I move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 5101 South County Line from PUD 1839 to PUD 1987. Councilwoman Peck, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Subject to the amended technical evaluations, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11D is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 11836 Southeast 29th from AA to PUD 1988. Councilman Stone, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. It's recommended by staff as well as the City Planning Commission, so I will move for its approval.
Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11E is an ordinance on final hearing, recommended for approval, rezoning 1926 Northwest 16th Street from R1 and UC to SPOD 1585. And you see, Councilwoman Hammond is not here.
I have been asked on behalf of Councilwoman Hammond to move this application forward.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing. It's recommended for approval, rezoning 1601 Northeast 15th from R1 to SPOD 1591. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, I do want to publicly say, I know Mr. Zidzow is the applicant for this application, and as some of you may or may not know, I am a student enrolled at the University of Oklahoma. In this semester, I am taking a class, and Mr. Zidzow is my professor. So, I want to publicly say that I have talked to the municipal counselor, and he has advised me that there is not a conflict. But I want you all to publicly know this information, and if anyone feels that I need to recuse myself from any of their applications, I am happy to do that. Otherwise, I will continue to work with the integrity that I have been doing for the last five years in this space in being able to decide and recommend or deny applications that have been in front of me with Mr. Zidzow as we have previously. So, I will be mentioning this every other Tuesday, so I apologize that it will be a broken record, but for my own integrity moving forward, I think this is necessary for me to say every other Tuesday. So, again, if anyone has any recusals that they would like for me to recuse myself, I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, I would like to go ahead and move forward with this application.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we've now reached the various items you may recall from two weeks ago. We had 12 separate votes related to adoptions of our building code, mechanical code, related items. So, we're now entering that. Now, we do have one resident who has signed up to speak, and so, perhaps we'll start there. This is relative to 11G, and I would ask Audra Beasley to come forward, and please state your name and address, and limit your remarks to three minutes or less.
I'm really tall, so I have to do this. I'm Audra Beasley, and my address is 7204 South Blackwelder Avenue. The Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted by Congress in 1990. It's been almost 35 years since Congress gathered as a group and decided that America was for everybody. America is for everyone, and it's taken 30, nearly 35 years for that belief to hit Oklahoma City. The Will Rogers World Airport was one of the first airports in the, in the nation to install an adult-sized changing table. And prior to that, Karen Carney found it really responsible of the, of the airport that its employees would direct my son and I to the floor. There's Americans being directed to the floor in restrooms and naked in parking lots all over this country because it's taken 35 years for people to realize that America is for everyone. Embedded within this is what the International Code Council has adopted as new building standards that include adult-sized changing tables in all buildings covered under Title II and III of the Americans with Disabilities Act. My son has restroom access rights in this building, and he's not here today because he doesn't have a restroom in this building. I believe City Hall needs an adult-sized changing table. I believe when we build big buildings like this, when we build a new arena, a new library, a new big theater, a new Oklahoma State Department of Education building. My son has rights at the Oklahoma State Department of Education building, and there's people in that building that think he doesn't. You know, I have a charge, I have two charges with the Attorney General about a bunch of hateful, bigoted people in this city that believe my son don't have restroom access rights. But Congress said we, he did 35 years ago, didn't he? Oklahoma City has an opportunity to adopt building standards, and we will be the first city in the world to do so. We should take great pride that the Oklahoma City Convention Center.
30 seconds remaining.
Is across the street from this huge, great, big, beautiful, accessible, inclusive, well-planned, thought-out park. And where else in the nation do we have such a great big building and great big park where everybody is planned for? Nowhere. I want to thank Mr. Scott Wise and the team at the city. We have impeccable leadership in this city. I'm so thankful for the time you all put in. I know it's a lot. And I want to walk away today and tell my baby, go back to that school down there, and tell him that he had unanimous support from every single one of you, that nobody around this horseshoe wants my baby directed to the floor ever. Because I go down too. It demands unanimous support. And all our buildings, our state fair, the PACOM, Mayor Holt.
Ms. Beasley, we're over time.
All these buildings, all these buildings.
Thank you. Okay. We're over time.
We're going to, we have a problem to fix, don't we?
Thank you for coming down today.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Scott.
If you, if you don't mind, before we vote, I do want to just say thank you for your, for your comments. And I, I know for me, it's necessary to let you know. I know we, as we were working through the state fair arena that will be built, that is coming, there will be adult-changing stations in that new building, in that facility. So, I want you to be rest assured that even when this was introduced two weeks ago, that was the specific language that Mr. Wise and, and the efforts that were brought forward were by language that adult-changing stations would be introduced within this code. So, I, I, I know you are constantly on, online advocating, and you are supposed to, you are supposed to. But I do want you to be aware that there are things that are working that have already been implemented without this right now. And so, we're working towards those efforts for the future. So, I appreciate you again.
I want to thank you for your support and your advocacy for that building. I know you had a play in that. But my baby needs to be able to go to the state fair too, and we haven't been. I shouldn't be out in the parking lot with my baby at the state fair. So, this year, this fair, there needs to be some adult-sized changing tables so I can take my kid to the fair. We're going to make it done, aren't we? It's systemic ableism. MLK told us all to rise. The silent must rise.
Okay.
Thank you all. Matt?
All right, 11G1 is the ordinance on final hearing relating to the building code. Staff is requesting an emergency, but we'll get to that in a moment. We'll start first with the vote on the ordinance, unless there's any further comments or questions. If not, we will, and of course, this is the third meeting. This has been considered. We had a previous, oh, second. Sorry, remind me. We had a previous presentation on it at our last meeting. All right, so we could take a motion on the ordinance. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now, as I said, staff has requested a vote on an emergency. Passes unanimously. Now, as I said, staff has requested a vote on an emergency. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required seven votes for an emergency. Now, G2, this is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Building Code. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. G3, this is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Existing Building Code. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And G4 is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, H1 is an ordinance on final hearing relating to fire prevention and protection regulations, and we will seek an emergency vote after passage of the ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And as I said, staff is seeking an emergency here, so if that is the desire of the council, we could seek that motion now. We have a motion and a second for the emergency. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required seven votes. Item I is, I1, is an ordinance on final hearing relating to the mechanical code. Oh, thank you. Let's back up. H2 is a resolution declaring the need for adoption of the International Fire Code. We are on H2. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're at item I1. This is the ordinance on final hearing relating to the mechanical code. This too will have an emergency vote. Got a motion and a second. Second pending, there it is. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And staff requests an emergency on this ordinance vote. If that is the desire of the council, make a motion now. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the necessary seven votes. Item I2 is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Mechanical Code. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item I3 is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Fuel Gas Code. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11J is an ordinance on final hearing relating to plumbing and the plumbing code. This is one we will also seek an emergency. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And staff is seeking an emergency vote on this ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Cooper there, are you voting? Okay, there we go. Passes unanimously and with the necessary seven votes. J2 is a resolution declaring the need for the adoption of the International Plumbing Code. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we just did J2, right? Okay, all right. K, item K, this is an ordinance on final hearing relating to the general schedule of fees for building electrical plumbing and mechanical board of appeals. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and staff requests an emergency on this ordinance as well. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the necessary seven votes for the emergency. All right, thank you. I'm sure there's a lot of staff work that goes into all of that, so thank you to everybody who worked on those very necessary items for our city. Okay, we're now at item L. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance that was presented at our last meeting relating to motor vehicles and traffic. What even was the general topic of this? What's like the, what was this about?
These were recommended by the Traffic Commission.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I know that Debbie made a presentation on these before. You want her to touch on them?
Nope, I was just like to kind of remind people what this was. Yeah, okay, this was the Traffic Commission recommendations. Okay. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing found at item L and advance to item M. This is the public hearing regarding the ordinance relating to motor vehicles and traffic. Similarly, I suppose, more Traffic Commission recommendations. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
So, we will close the public hearing. And now we'll advance to item N1. This is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
I'll ask for item A, if we can defer that for two weeks.
Okay.
It's March 26.
For March 26?
That's what Debbie told me. They need to, the contractor's coming out, and they're going to have that done by March 15, and then he'll be cast for March 26.
Okay, unfortunately, I'm getting information I'm just now hearing.
And that's my fault.
So, I'll go ahead and ask for that deferral until March 26 for this development, and please have him contact me.
I will. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so the request is to defer item N1A to March 26. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred. Now, we're back on the items at N1A, and no one has signed up to speak, so we'll advance now to the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated found at N2. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item O1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structure in the Historic Preservation Landmark District. Item A at 416 Northwest 29th. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
You have not. And so, we'll advance to the resolution found at O2 declaring that the structure is dilapidated. We have a motion and a second.
Am I allowed to say something right now about this as we vote? It's not a bad thing.
No, you're uncanny in how you wait till the very last moment, though. But yes, we've got the vote open. But yes, what do you need to say?
I got a lot on my plate. No, I just wanted to, this is just an important one because there are neighbors in Jefferson Park who brought this structure to my attention, and it's a painful one because this is a historic neighborhood. But this home has sat in kind of the worst condition for a really long time. So, I do publicly right now want to acknowledge this process and this step. This was an important thing that they asked me to bring to their attention. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, 11P1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for the one previously struck. Amy, oh, we do have someone who signed up to speak.
And then, before we do that, I would like to also defer item E until the 26.
All right, why don't we do that real quick? So, we're going to take a motion to defer item E to March 26. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. George Beatty? Yeah, come on forward. So, you're here to speak about item A on Blackwelder. And then, that item appears again under item Q as well. So, go ahead.
Yeah, page 12. P, 2613 South Blackwelder. I've had, kind of back up a little bit, my mom owned this property. She owned two other properties in Oklahoma City. This particular one is on, it's on the south side of Oklahoma City. I've had the police out there two or three, at least three times, there are homeless individuals in the house, and they will not evict, they will not evict them. And what the guy in the house told the police was that I had made some type of agreement with him that he could stay in there. I don't even know this guy. It's a real dangerous area. The actual house, there was a shooting in there. The person that was, actually, we had a confrontation. The police came, they handcuffed the guy because he was arguing with me. His sister actually got, somehow, there's some connection between him and his sister, and his sister had told him that I had given them permission to be in the house. So, I guess what I'm asking, and then she ended up getting killed over on, off of 25th and Shields. I don't think they've ever found out what, who did it. So, anyway, I got this notice, and you've got to understand that when you have a property like this, it's hard to keep these people out. And it seems like the law enforcement, rather than them people being out on the streets, if they can get into somebody's house, they don't have to worry about them. And so, I guess I'm here just kind of complaining against how some of this is handled. And so, I talked to the code enforcement person, and he said that they're going to go out there and board this place up. Well, I've done that numerous times, and they just come in there. And I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir here, I know you've heard this before, but they tear the whatever plywood or, you know, and I've bolted it on there. So, I guess what, on here, I'm just kind of asking to see if there could be some more time granted for me to get these guys out of that house.
So, let me get Chad Ex and Code Enforcement Superintendent, if we can work with you on that timeframe. And also, I'll get with our homeless outreach team, see if they can't meet us out on the property, and if anyone's there at the property, maybe we can help with that as well.
I even told the, you know, the police officers, I said, you know, somebody got shot in that house, and it's a really, you know, it's a dangerous area. The other issue too I have is that, after my mom passed away, I had two sisters that lived in that house. They couldn't get along. They left, they just left it. And so, these other properties my mom owned, I've taken care of them for like 40 years. And so, when my sisters left, of course, I ended up having to foot the bill on cleaning it up. I've got a, got a big assessment against on that property. And I had cleaned, we had cleaned it up, and then what happens is other people, you know, other individuals will come in and dump stuff. And so, I got a bill on there, I don't know, it's probably $3,000. The other thing is, the electricity and the water hasn't been used in there for years, and there's still a water bill. They're still charging that house as a water bill. And it's like $3,000. Normally, when you don't pay, and I know, I live in Andarco, if I don't pay public service, they shut my electricity off. And so, I don't know if that's, if this is the venue to air that complaint.
We can look into that. We can look into that. Have our utilities department look at that.
Can I?
Sure, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, may I also ask a question? Hi. I was just asking the councilman to remind me your, the details of how this property came to be, your stewardship. So, it was your mother's, and now you're managing?
I'm the administrator for the estate.
Are you all looking at, what, selling it or, okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to sell it. But if, when, you know, any realtor, when they go over there and see somebody in there, and, you know, they just, you know, I've got offers on it, but they don't, you know, I don't even know what the condition inside of the house looks like right now because of these guys that's in there. There's like, initially, there's like four or five people in there. And so, yeah, I'm trying to sell it.
I think some thoughtfulness might need to happen. I'm glad you're talking about bringing the homeless outreach team to that location because the reason why, just deducing this, people are taking shelter there is because we have, as I'm sure you read in the paper, a housing crisis. We are short housing, and it is contributing to the homelessness crisis. And this is not a place I would want our unhoused neighbors to be living. I want them in actually something secure and stable, right? But what I've learned is, when you're in a crisis and in survival mode, you do some things, you know, maybe you're not, they're not the healthiest, right? So, I would encourage you all, as you're visiting that home, we got to figure out how to get this, a home that is something that someone can actually live in. Because I think otherwise, it's just going to be Band-Aids on dams, is what I'm saying. So, just whatever you all can do to really get to the root cause is there, and then, of course, connect the people who are there to housing and services. I was so happy to hear you say that. But we got to figure out how to get this into like actual condition so that it is on the market. So, I just wanted to bring that up. So, I guess I don't want to keep seeing this show up here, is what I'm saying. So...
Yeah. And also too, I told you there was two other properties. Two of them are lots. And these guys will just, they'll drive their vehicles in there. I've got, had the police come out, and it just doesn't, so, one of the, when I, I think the last time that, and I actually did talk to the guys, and he ended up leaving. But they'll bring trash. I've had to clean that thing up 10 times probably. And so, when I talked, one of the police officers said, well, you know, one of the problems is you've got trees kind of around it, and when it's hot, you know, they, and so, he said, if I was you, I'd just cut the trees down. Well, you know, cutting trees down costs a lot of money. And I was thinking, why would I need to cut the trees down if these guys are the ones that's trespassing to fix the problem? It seems like it'd be easier just to get the guys out of there. But it's a, and I'm sure you have these complaints all the time, but it is an issue. So, but I appreciate you guys. And so, Chad, what do you recommend we do?
I think we leave it on the docket. We'll work with him as far as getting it secured, get a good timeline, and then we can all meet out there with our homeless outreach team, and if anyone's present, we can try to get them the services they need.
Yeah, and I've actually got the paperwork, stuck it on a door. Guys just, you know, rip it off so I can have the meeting with the sheriff and stuff. But it's a difficult situation. I know it's, it's all over. It's all over the city, but it's tough. But I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
I can, I can speak more in the hall.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, George. Okay, well, that was the only person who signed up to speak on item, on the public hearing at P1. So, we can now close the hearing and move to the resolution found at P2 declaring that the structures So we can now close the hearing and move to the resolution found at P2 declaring that the structures are unsecured, except for those previously deferred or struck. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11 Q1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Oh, that one's still there, isn't it?
Yes.
It's on everyone today.
Yeah, it's on all of our lists today. So we'll defer item D until March 26th, please.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to defer item D to March 26th. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, no one has signed up to speak on this public hearing, other than Mr. Beatty, who we just heard from. And so we'll advance to the resolution at Q2 declaring that the buildings are abandoned, except for those previously struck or deferred. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we're at item R. This is a resolution establishing a revised policy for the investment of municipal funds in the custody of the city treasurer. I believe we have a presentation.
Yeah, Matt Boggs, our city treasurer, gives a presentation update on the proposed changes to the investment policy.
Good morning. What you have before you today is just an update to our investment policy. Back in the 2023 legislative session, House Bill 2538 amended the statutes that govern municipal investments. It expanded what they call the authorized and suitable investments to include local government investment pools. And all we're doing is adding that to our list of authorized investments within our policy, because we quote the statute directly in the policy. And it's pretty, pretty simple from that legislative change. So, are you taking any other questions you have?
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Well then, we can take up the resolution if there are no questions. This is the item, this is item R. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item S is a resolution receiving an amendment to the Plan OKC Comprehensive Plan, making various text and map amendments that update and clarify the document. Mr. City Manager, you have a presentation here as well.
Yes, Jeff Butler, our planning director, is gonna give us an update and presentation on the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan.
Good morning, Jeff Butler, Planning Director. Just wanted to give you an update on the, on the comprehensive plan. And make sure the clicker works here. So we've done, we do this every couple of years or so. It's a, it's a, I would call it kind of a, an administrative cleanup, some updates that are relatively minor. And it's to kind of clarify the plan in a lot of cases. If there are some glitches that we've run into, we'll fix those. Occasionally, we'll do updates to the land use topology to accommodate new growth and so on. In this case, we wanted to make some changes, updating, or excuse me, adopting the downtown development framework. It already has been adopted as a city plan for many years. But the technicality being that it's adopted as part of the Plan OKC makes it a little easier for us to utilize it in our day-to-day work. We wanted to make some text and map changes to Chapter 2, the Development Guide, and also update to accommodate the Innovation District land use plan, which is still relatively new. So the first thing that we, that we did is, on the left, you see our previous land use topology area map that covers the downtown area. And on the right, you see the newly amended, the planning, the planning commission adopted this just recently, a couple of weeks ago. And what this does, it just makes it a little easier, instead of having some kind of conflicting guidance, not conflicting per se, but, but not super straightforward. Now we have the ability to just say, okay, we're using this one geography, we have a set of policies that applies, and it makes it a little easier for users to not have to go back and forth between one and the other. So that is the first change. The other thing we did is, you can see comparing the left to the right, there's a few minor amendments that we've done in the Innovation District area, which is that, the area bounded by the yellow line there. So we've taken what's called the urban high and scaled it back in a few areas, some of the, in recent planning work out there, it's been, some areas are now planned to be a little lower density, and that's reflected in the Innovation District plan. As well as some, some other minor changes. The other thing we did, we wanted to, currently, the street typology, which is an important part, we have the land use topology and the street typology. And they work together because land use and transportation are extremely, they're, they're integral, they're very important, that we, it's very important that we consider them together. So we had arterials, minor and major, we had connectors, and then we have neighborhood streets, main streets, and so on. It became clear, as we were working through the code update and doing some other things, that it would be good to have the connectors separated into two different types. So it's adding another nuance to the plan. It helps us in the future to be able to regulate a little bit better as we update the code. So there's a little bit of information there about what minor connectors are, and what major connectors are. Major connectors, as differentiated, have a little bit higher traffic, a little bit more diverse types of land use would be on them, a little bit higher volume of traffic, and so on. So, just wanted to kind of reiterate that those, those street typology changes have also incorporated and streamlined, we've kind of brought in what was done previously in the Innovation District, changed the names a little bit to match things up, so that the streets are called the same thing. They were similar before, but now, they're all called the same thing. It's much more clear and straightforward. Here are the changes, the previous street types and the, as amended street types. Just a few changes here and there to, in the Innovation District area to accommodate some, some changes in street types, mostly related to connector streets. Happy to, and there, there's a lot of detail in the attachment in the council packet. We did do quite a few changes when we separated out the minor and major connectors. Of course, we then had to go citywide and designate which ones were major and which ones were minor. So that's all in the, in the packet. So you can look at if you desire, but I'm happy, happy to answer any questions.
Would you mind going back one slide, please? And this is, as a teacher, this is the part where after I've learned a lesson, or I teach a lesson, I kind of need to have like an assessment. Can you just kind of walk us through here, like, you have the legend, right? So, give us these examples, because I think if, if someone's just watching this, it could very easily just like, oh, you just said these things, and okay, but you defined them, now show us, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure, yeah. So, for example, you have the red streets, the major arterials. Those are, I think, largely unchanged from the previous to the as amended. The next step down for the major and minor arterials are the connectors, so those shown in the blue and the green. The, so, for example, the, the, kind of the straight blue major connectors, those are designated as streets that you see, would see a little more traffic, higher levels of development, and, or a combination of the two. So for example, there's been a desire expressed by the community, and the intent there from the area in the south of 8th, for example, is to have a higher, a little bit higher density on some of those, which is why they're designated as major connectors. Some of the ones to the north are the desires to have lower density, so they're shown as, as minor connectors. And then the gray, the light gray, would be just neighborhood streets where it's even lower density. And the plan, it would be kind of your lower density residential type, mostly in nature.
So then 8th Street's this red one down here on the south part, right? And that's where we would see that kind of higher intensity, maybe development. And then those connector streets to the south of it would have some of that, but not with the intensity. But they're all connecting you ultimately to that more commercial corridor on 8th Street. That's what I'm hearing?
Yes, so the, yeah, that is designated as a minor arterial, 8th Street. And then the neighborhood of the south again is, is the vision there is to have something that would be a little higher density, a lot of connectivity there, getting you, as you said, to 8th Street, and potentially, if we can, to the south and over to Deep Duce. There's some discussion about that, but right now, that's, that's not feasible, but there's a desire there.
Thanks for slowing down with me there. I just think it's important, when we see these sorts of maps, that we kind of slow down with our residents to, you know, let them in on this terminology, and sometimes people are not, they are visual learners, so they actually need to see and then hear those words together. So I really do appreciate you doing that. I'm a visual learner, so.
As am I. I must, I must have a map. It's hard for me to, staff will often tell me the numbers of cases, and it doesn't really work for me, but.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you mentioned south of 8th, because that was going to be my question, as far as the south of 8th study is concerned. How much of that was integrated into this Innovation District plan? How much?
So the Innovation District plan was done, oh, I want to say, a couple of years prior to the south of 8th?
No, I mean, to this revision that you just presented.
So, we have considered that, which, that's really the main reason why, for example, the south of 8th is designated as major connectors, because of the south of 8th plan. So to the extent we could, those were taken, that, that plan was taken into consideration. So, the land use typology from that plan, it was already pretty consistent with what we already had in the Innovation District land use plan. We did do some street typology updates, and those are really the two main things that the Innovation District plan, as part of the comprehensive plan, the, the land use and the street typology, those are the two main things that, that influence what gets developed over there. So, yeah, again, I think the, the land use plan that we showed earlier, so you can see that that, tho, those densities there are consistent with both the Innovation District plan and the south of 8th plan. And you can see that kind of commercial, the urban commercial on 8th Street is consistent with, with, with both Innovation District and south of 8th plans. So we feel like that does a good job of capturing that planning effort, as does the, the street typology.
Okay, thank you. I want to compliment the community more so about how these, these plans can be influenced as far as how we navigate through planning for our communities. Had it not been for the south of 8th community coming together to say, these are the things that we want to see for this particular area of our community, we may not have had this type of introduction for, for this plan. And, and I will say, I, I hope that we will continue to integrate that plan into how we ensure sustainability and community for this part of the Innovation District, that south of 8th area. But with this, I am pleased, but I wanted to ensure that it was publicly said that this was a community-led effort for the south of 8th plan, now, excuse me, for our city to take some time to say, okay, let's integrate these things and, and understand and, and work towards the ways that we can do better for this part of our community with our planning efforts. So I know there's still some work to do. And I, I hope that we will continue to work towards the ways that we can, can make this, make this efficient for this part of our community.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no other comments or questions, we could take up the resolution found at item S. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item T is a resolution approving action taken by the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust, authorizing the issue and sale and delivery of its amended Series 2023A Clean Water State Revolving Fund Promissory Note to the OWRB. And we have a presentation?
Yes, Chris Brownie, our Water Utilities Director, will explain what we're doing in funding, getting this funding for projects.
Good morning, Chris Brownie, Utilities Director. Back in October of '23, we submitted an application with your authorization to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for roughly $54 million for capital improvement projects for utilities. As a part of that, the, the Water Board asked us to consider a pilot project where they wanted to provide funding to remove septic tanks from 23 homes where those septic tanks were failing. So the project included the installation of 1,400 feet of sewer to do that, and then decommission those septic tanks. We bid the project, came in higher than the allocated funds, so we went back to the Water Board, and they have authorized an additional $850,000 so that we can award and construct that project. Now, the entire amount of funds, it's nearly $2 million, will be fully forgiven by the Water Board. The ratepayers are not gonna pay a dime for this project. So at this time, we recommend approval of this item, and I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. If there's no questions, we can proceed with adoption of the resolution found at item T. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the six affirmative votes necessary to incur indebtedness. Okay, item U1 is a resolution approving settlement of the property damage claim related to an automobile accident on October 13th, 2023, involving an Oklahoma City Fire Department vehicle and a third party toward Fieser Haley Alexander. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item V1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Schultz v. City of OKC. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item W1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal council to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Stevenson v. City of OKC, et cetera. Executive session is not requested. It's literally the last vote of the day. I really hate to get hung up here. So is there, I'll take a verbal second. All right, can you plug that in, or do we have to do the rest verbally as well? There we go. All right, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, and votes are now concluded for the day. We're at item 12, comments from council. Ward one?
Yes, sir. I got invited to a international bazaar this past Sunday to, to my knowledge, it was the first one ever done. The mayor of War Acres and Nadia Swice of the Swice family here locally had, had invited me and brought in just many different people, different businesses, from different countries, from around the world, just to kind of showcase what they do in their, their business, their culture, and their countries. And I just wanted to give a public thank you for the opportunity to be there and experience so many different cultures and, and have a great time. Got to take my family out there. It was, I hope they're gonna do more of these. And, and it was held in Ward one, and if I had known ahead of time, I would have invited more of you. So hopefully for the next one, we'll have, have a bigger showcase for everybody. Just wanted to say thank you for the invite and the opportunity to get to, to enjoy that day with them.
Thank you, Ward two?
Yes, thank you. So first, I'd like to say thank you to John A. Reed Jr. for the invite to his church yesterday, where I was honored to receive the Spirit of the Community Award. It was very kind. Community Award. It was very kind. I saw Clara Looper's daughter Marilyn sitting a robe behind me. I got to sit with Nikki and Mama Nice, which is always a a treat. Representative Jason Lowe was there. I just really want to thank the church community for that. That really means a lot to me, just to go hang out in Ward seven for a little bit. Also, if you weren't there yesterday, oh, boy, you missed a choir. It was something. And that drummer, he just, he was, he was on fire. And then, you know, Pastor Reed, 85 years old, I believe. Is that right? 86? You should have seen that man standing behind a podium, just jumping up and down. I turned Nikki and I said, we should be so lucky, because at 41, my knees. So, you know, it was really impressive. And I'm just, I'm, I am grateful. I am truly grateful. So that's the good news. I do have a little bit of bad news. And as you heard me say earlier, I I have a lot on my plate. And what I mean by that is I have a lot on my mind. I'll structure my remarks by saying, when you have a problem, you have to name the problem. Number two, you have to explain why it's a problem. And then number three, what the solution is. The problem is violence. And specifically, violence aimed at lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer people. When, in 2020, The Advocate, which is the largest LGBT magazine in the country, reached out to our city and honored me and a volleyball coach at OU as what they called the Champions of Pride. They identified two LGBTQ residents per state who they saw doing work in their community for the betterment of community. And they asked for words from me about my work. And when I received that email, I was at Scissor Tall Park in May of 20, at the height of the pandemic. And it was just a stunning moment to receive that good news in the midst of truly some of the worst global news I can possibly articulate. Council and mayor and city manager especially, I want you to know that when The Advocate reached out and I shared my words back with them, what I highlighted were two things. One, that we had just passed a $1.1 billion penny sales tax investment in our people parks and places. That's what I highlighted. And that's what the readers of The Advocate learned about Oklahoma City, that we are a city that invests in ourselves, that we invest in our neighborhood, that the next 10 years of OKC's future will be defined by investments in sidewalks and public transportation and diversion hubs. I need you to know that before I tell you the bad news. The bad news is, that same Advocate paper, two days ago, they were, they had a freelance reporter on 39th Street as we were at a vigil for the death of a student. That that death made international news. All eyes were on the state of Oklahoma and have been on the state of Oklahoma for the better part of at least a week, if you did not know. And as if that weren't, you know, already a thing, you know, as a public official, I waited to make any comments about that death because I wanted to learn as much as I could. I tried to be as responsible as I could. And I will be darned if a state official, when a constituent of theirs asks them why Oklahoma's legislature, just to be clear, not our council, not our council, not our council, we are better than this legislature. But I want to be very clear. I want to be crystal clear how proud I am of OKC's council. But our legislature so far has introduced at least 50 bills targeting lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people, targeting them, targeting them. And one of a state-elected officials, their constituents, asked them a simple question, why? Why is that happening? And this person, what they had to say was that we are a religious state and we are going to fight to keep that filth out of the state of Oklahoma. Because we are a Christian state, we are a moral state. Did you know that 41% of LGBT youth have reported in the last couple of years that they have considered taking their lives? Do you know why? When elected officials speak like that, when reverends and pastors or leaders in places of worship speak like that, did you know that part of the problem, remember I said we're going to identify the problem, why it's a problem, and then the solution? Did you know that youth homelessness, as I've told you all on this council time and time again, that homeless LGBT youth disproportionately make up? Those statistics, did you know that? And why is that? It's because too many of their parents or their guardians have a backwards interpretation of their sacred text. I will not be kind about it. I absolutely will not be kind about it because children's lives are on the line. And we're losing children. And let me also be clear, my status as a city council person does not protect me from that violence. As I've mentioned to you all before, one of the first openly LGBT elected officials, Jim Roth, the honorable Jim Roth, my friend, was at a bar where Ward two meets Ward six about 10 years ago, just hanging out uptown, you know, the trendy place where all the cool kids go. And someone called him out of his name and used words like filth to describe him. That's an elected official. That was someone appointed by a Republican governor to fill a position. It didn't protect him because someone did not like the way he spoke. It was a little bit too queer. And that's the sort of language the kids hear on your playgrounds, just so we're clear. I have given versions of this speech on this horseshoe so many times now I have lost count. And the first, one of the first laws, the second this state became a state, the second this state became a state, was a law we borrowed from the Dakotas, saying that if you were LGBTQ, if you engaged in the act, the romantic act of consensual romance, which means with an adult, another adult, two adults, you could go to prison for 10 years. 10 years. 10 years in prison. Is that what we mean when we say we're a Christian state? When we're a moral state? You know who borrowed that language? Adolf Hitler. He borrowed that language as an excuse to literally put lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people in concentration camps, in concentration camps, in ovens. So I have a lot on my plate. I have a lot on my mind. And I come here and I do this work. I do this work because I love Ward two and I love our neighborhoods and we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of sidewalks to build, bike lanes to build, youth centers to build. And that's the work we're doing. And I remember when I won and they noted I was the first openly LGBT council person, there were people in the comments saying, why does it matter? You're right. It should not matter. It should not matter. Y'all have no business knowing what date I went on and if it went well. You just don't. Y'all don't. I'll tell Nikki. I'll tell Matt if you ask. But I'm not, it's just not your business. Do you know who makes it people's business? The state legislature. When they say that you can go to prison for 10 years, when they call you out your name by saying you are filth and not a human being. Okay? So as a queer person, I will always proudly, proudly say that I am queer until this stops, this violence stops. Words have consequences. But I guess y'all already know that. Y'all already know that. So what's the solution? What is the solution? Ward one, Ward three, Ward four, five, six, seven, eight. The solution is, when was the last time you talked to one of your LGBTQ constituents, particularly a young person? When have you affirmed them? When have you told them they are loved? City manager, mayor, municipal council? When have you told someone who is LGBT youth they are loved? That their gods love them? You love them? That they matter? Because if you have, thank you so much, because there's literal data data saying that LGBT youth who report having at least one accepting adult are 40% less likely to report a suicide attempt. That's the answer. That's part of the answer. That is part of the answer, friends. It's you. You are the one you've been waiting for. If you're not saying that openly, please hear me right now. I need you to consider what I have just said. That's, that's a, that's a request from me. Kids are dying and you have the ability to intervene. Affirm them because you have elected officials saying they are not human beings, but they are filth. Meanwhile, as the first elected LGBT council person, I am helping to rebuild this city. And I am grateful to each one of you who are rebuilding it with me. I really am. I am grateful. That is the work I will always do. But this is nonsense. We can't keep making international news for nonsense, for nonsense, for nonsense, not when we are rebuilding our historic Paseo and our Capitol Hill and our stockyards, when we have a councilwoman working right now to make sure that Meridian is a gateway out of the airport, when you have an east side and a south side and another south side. Y'all are doing great work and that's what we need to be known for. You need to call out these people. You need to call out these people. And if you're a Republican, you definitely need to call him out because he said that your party wants this. I have Republican voters in Ward two, and many of them voted for me. And they are better than this. And I am grateful that they are better than this. But now is the time we all rise up and say we are better than this because our kids' lives are literally on the line. And I know y'all like to make little jokes sometimes, council members, about how long I talk. I have to. I have to. I have to say these words at length. It's not in their textbooks. And I'll be honest, it's scary to say these words. It's scary to say these words. Do any of you up here know what it's like for someone to pass legislation about you and your life in terms of, can you get married? Can you get married? Can you fall in love? Do you know that? To have to fight for that, to have to find the words in the Constitution to defend that? And to my Christians, someone lied to you a long time ago when they told you, when they told you that queer people are enemies of Christ. Someone lied to you 500 years ago in the doctrine of discovery, when they said that you have the right to turn people into slaves if they are not Christians, if they are not Europeans. Go Google doctrine of discovery. The Pope apologized last year for the doctrine of discovery because the doctrine of discovery was allowed some Christians to come and genocide Native Americans and put black people as slaves. And we got to get those words out of people's minds because we are all God's children. And enough's enough because Oklahoma is better than the words of a madman.
Thank you, Ward three. Ward four? Ward five?
I just want to congratulate the 23 young people who joined our police force a week ago. It was a neat ceremony down on the far, far, far south side. So congratulations.
Ward seven?
Yes. First, let me say to Councilperson Cooper, we see you and we hear you and thank you. Also, as you asked the question, who has, who has had legislation brought against them to live? I think there are many groups, unfortunately, that can say there has been legislation brought forward that does not give them the ability to be and exist. And that is the unfortunate part of of what happened, what is happening, and where our future could possibly be going if we are not taking time to understand, uncover, unpack, and then repack the things that are being said and the actions that are being made. I wanted to, I have quite a few things. I wanted to give a special thanks of gratitude to the Sooner Success. They had an inclusive Black History Month event on Saturday. No, it was Sunday, Sunday. And it's for our community who have different abilities. I know some, some of us call them disabilities, but they have different abilities. And it was an amazing event to see our community, those who you don't get to see, out and be expressive and embrace their own culture. And we get to celebrate them. So that was an amazing, an amazing event that was held at the Willoughby Johnson Recreation Center. And everyone that I came in contact with talked about how beautiful the facility was because a lot of people clearly, this is some of their first time being able to see it for themselves. We see many pictures of it, but a lot of people don't get to see it for themselves. And I also want to say thank you to you a lot. They did present an award for best public initiative to the Willoughby Johnson Recreation Center. And I would like to say that that award belongs to our community because our community, we were the ones who came forward to say, these are the things that we want in this particular community center. These are the colorways we choose because that was also an option for our community. And for them to be participants, they are the true awardees of this award. Yesterday, my first visit ever was to the Federal Transfer Center on the south side to speak to the folks that worked there for Black History Month. And to be able to, to just see the facility for myself, understand the things that are happening and taking place. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the warden as well as the the committee that asked for me to to be their, their Black History Month speaker. And on Friday, for our Black History Month poster contest, it was myself and and four others that helped to judge for the Oklahoma City Thunder. Very grateful for the opportunity. But I have a, we had a freshman winner from Dell City, a sophomore winner from Douglas High School, a junior winner from Southeast, and a Douglas High School senior. Those were our winners for the Black History Month contest. And I do want to shout out, while I shout out all of them, I find it, as we talk about the theme for this month, Black, for Black History Month, African Americans in the Arts. The junior that did her artwork, she is a student at Southeast, but she attends Metro Tech. And as soon as I saw her artwork, I said, I know this, I know this picture. And it's, it's the picture of our murals that are on Northeast 36 in Lincoln at the grocery store. And she told me, I got the chance to talk to her, and she said, I pass that every single day. And she said, it inspired me to do the art that I did. And and that was her, her winning art piece that was presented. So the power of arts, the power of of being seen, the power of being able to have murals and and things that that show and things that show themselves within people, very grateful that we're able to do that with the things that we have. I also wanted to shout out St. Mary's CME Church. I was able to attend their church last week, last Sunday, as their Black History Month speaker. But one of the things that I found very profound, as far as the history of this church, when you think of St. Mary's, you often think of, you know, maybe Mary from the Bible, as far as why some of these names happen and they're present. But in 1935, this church was founded in Oklahoma City, and the lady's name, her name was Mary. And so imagine, in the 1930s, a pastor being appointed to the first church, and it was a female that was appointed as the pastor for St. Mary's CME. And they are 90 years strong next year, so I think it's very important to understand that history. And because I'm not CME, I wouldn't normally know something like that, but to be able to just have that piece of history for myself and understand it, I was very grateful for the opportunity. Also, congratulations to Spencer, our city of Spencer. Clearly, they neighbor Oklahoma City in Ward Seven, but Chet Holmgren of the Oklahoma City Thunder, he has his brand-new effort in bringing courts to the community, as some of our other Thunder players have done in the past. But his first court that he dedicated and built is located at Crenland Park in Spencer, Oklahoma. And it's a double court for our youth, and he was there with his mother, his family, his father, and his sister. And those young people were so excited to see this state-of-the-art basketball court. And this is thanks to him, as well as JD Sports, and JD Sports had the folks that were a part of the artistic team that decorated or designed the court, if you will. There, and these young people, our middle school students from Star Spencer, they all walked away with a brand-new pair of shoes from JD Sports, compliments of Chet. So very grateful, again, of the ways that we can be intentional. There's still some work to be done, as far as ensuring this part of our community is served and having those resources, but this is definitely a first step. So congratulations to the mayor of Spencer, the vice mayor, and the city manager for their efforts and what they're doing. I also wanted to congratulate Councilperson Cooper on his Spirit of the Community Award, because there were quite a few people that were also acknowledged, but I was grateful to see you acknowledged, very grateful for the work that you're doing, and also that another pastor is recognizing you for your efforts within our community and within our city. Douglas Boys and Girls Regional Win, they had a regional win this past Saturday, so congratulations to them. They have one more step before they take it to the state competition, so we'll be cheering on our Douglas High School Boys and Girls Basketball Team in their efforts to make it to state and to win state. We're going to take state, by the way, so we're going to cheer them on. We're going to take state. There's a couple things happening tonight. Affordable Housing Forum, if you have an opportunity to attend, this is going to be brought by Ms. Brittany Grant. We'll be hanging out at Spike Coffee from 5:30 to 7:00. Would love for those who are wanting information about affordable housing to attend. And also, another mention I wanted to bring was the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, NFBPA. They had a luncheon on Friday that we were able to attend, and they are asking our city manager for 50 memberships, so I wanted to say that publicly, so we can get 50 memberships for them. But grateful for them, as they honored the Terry Childers' legacy, the first African American and only African American that we've had to be city manager for our city, as well as Dr. Dorcine Spigner Littles and the Edwards family. And I think it's very important for us to honor the legacy of the Edwards family and the things that they've had done. There was a time when Mr. Edwards, his wife, she was unable to be treated, well, she could be treated, but she couldn't get the best treatment at the hospital, in the basement hospital here in Oklahoma City. And because they were well-to-do at the time, he was able to take her to the Mayo Clinic and have her served. And when they came back, they built a hospital for black folks in the community, because they knew what was happening and what was not happening from the experiences of his wife. So these are the people that have built by hand the area of northeast Oklahoma City, and the history and their legacy will continue to live on. And with this, I know Wednesday, I wanted to thank all of those who walked with us to the county commissioners' meeting. We walked six, almost seven miles from Northeast 23rd and Coltrane to the downtown area. And the conversation from us was, we want to keep the jail located in the area where it is. Unfortunately, profit over people prevailed, and now we have a location that is decided upon to be Dell City. And I don't agree with the fact that we continue to put these types of facilities in places where our communities have been and continue to be very vulnerable. Why do we place communities on lists that do not need to be? No one said we're going to put a jail or a county detention center in Nichols Hills, in Oakdale, Deer Creek, Surry Hills, any of the areas that I just mentioned. But it's always easy to say, we'll put it in northeast Oklahoma City, we'll put it on the south side, we'll put it in all of the places that are vulnerable and should not be. So I will continue to speak out about this, because I am very disappointed in the way that we chose profit over people, because our residents deserve, even those who are incarcerated, deserve fair, adequate housing. And I know this is important, because we just had another fatality within our jail location, but why would we remove them from the services that are within proximity to them? I have a hard time understanding and dealing with that, other than the people who want to build high rises in that place for their own pockets, instead of us being intentional about how we care for our community. So I'm very disappointed in that, but I know the conversations will continue with that as well. So my last comment, before I finish up, is James, thank you for your partnership in us writing the op-ed that we were able to have presented in The Oklahoman on the Sunday, printed in The Oklahoman this Sunday. And one of the things that we are committed to is repairing the breach. And I tried to pull up the article, but I can't, because it's telling me I need to pay a dollar for six months, so I'm unable to do that in order to read it. But I wanted to, the reason I wanted to pull it up and read it was, I wanted to read the quote, and maybe you can help me, the quote that was at the bottom of that, that an Oklahoma lawmaker said to his legislature. And I don't know the exact year, but as James is pulling that up, too, go ahead, if you have it.
Yes, thank you. So during the Great Depression, an Oklahoma governor told legislators, quote, "We must provide the means for the advancement of the Negro race and accept him as God gave him to us and use him for the good of society. As a rule, they are failures as lawyers, doctors, and in other professions. He must be taught in the line of his own sphere as porters, boot blacks, and barbers."
And as you can see, we're better than that. We are attorneys. We are the people that can make decisions. We are the people of our city and of our state. So these are our words that have been said beyond, most recently, what we've heard another lawmaker say. And we need to call those things out, as we just heard. And I know we are better than that as a city, as well as a state. So I'll close with this. I know last, a couple Tuesdays ago, I said I would have receipts, and I do, about a comment that was made for us voting on the recommendations as far as the public safety, something, something, something. I don't know what it is, because that's not what we asked for it to be. The Page 41 of the 21 CP Solution says, independent law enforcement accountability to the community accountability. Accountability is named numerous times, because that is what the community asked for this board, to be named and to be awarded, as far as how we look at those things that needed to be said and done in order for us to recommend how we respond. I wanted to say that I found my paper. It took me over a week to find it, that's because it's got a lot of papers in my office, but I found it. And the question was, again, who said the name change would be to this advisory board or whatever it is now called? And a summary of proposed change areas, name change to community or civilian, creating authority, the mayor's office. So again, I want to continue to say, this came from the mayor's office of this change. It was not the community, because our community asked for an accountability board, in the name, as well as in action, and that's not something that we received after two years of work.
Thank you, Ward Eight.
Yeah, Mark Van Lanningham is here today on behalf of the chamber. I want to thank the chamber staff for their new report that just came out called Developments Driving Oklahoma City's Retail Resurgence. And when I heard the word resurgence, I thought that was maybe a little strong, but once they quantified what's going on in Oklahoma City, and I'm going to go through some of the developments. The Oak Development, located across from Prin Square Mall, is a 20-acre mix of retail office space, Hilton Liveley Hotel, Residence, et cetera. The Half, a 95-acre mixed-use development in North Oklahoma City, which will include an eight-story hotel, 325 multifamily apartments, medical businesses, and two new-market restaurants. The $400 million O'Connor Resort and Indoor Water Park that is going up quite quickly. The Boardwalk at Bricktown. The Mustang Creek Crossing by Kilpatrick Turnpike, a lot of stuff going on out there just north of Southwest 15th Street. Then you have Chisholm Creek, which continues to expand and attract new businesses. You have a lot going on in downtown Oklahoma City. And then last, the Rose Creek Plaza, which is at Northwest 164th and May, which is in my ward, which has provided us with a new homeland and also several new restaurants. And so there's a reason we're the sixth fastest-growing city in the United States. We are in the middle of a resurgence. I'm proud that many developers from across the country are looking at Oklahoma City and want to come to Oklahoma City and make Oklahoma City a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes comments from council, and now we're at Item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. And we have some who have signed up to speak. I would remind everyone to introduce yourselves, say your name and your address, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Our clerk will remind you when you have got 30 seconds left, and then I will politely bring you to a conclusion if you're starting to go over time. So we'll begin with Baron O'Connor.
How's it going? Ward Two, Baron 3105, northwest 66th Street, wanting to talk today about what's going on in Palestine. First, I wanted to acknowledge that on October 7th, we lost a devastating degree of civilian casualties, 700 to 1,200 civilians. We really don't know how clearly, how many were lost there by the Palestinian resistance fighters that attacked Israel. But that violence should never be exacted upon civilians, either in premeditation or in retribution. We must also understand that the occupation and the blockade of the Gaza Strip from 2006 onwards, as an obstruction to Palestinian sovereignty, which has resulted in devastatingly bleak conditions, under which Palestinians have lived in all of the occupied territories, not just Gaza, but the West Bank and East Jerusalem, has contributed to direct increases in crises that face Palestinians across Gaza today. Approximately 40% of Gazans are severely malnourished, according to the UN World Food Program. 35% of the adult population is unemployed. 40% are under the age of 14. And that's not just because they're having a lot of kids, it's because they have a scarcity of contraceptives, there are devastating mortality rates for adults from illnesses, disease, and violence perpetrated on them by the Israeli occupation force, and over 85% of the population does not have daily access to potable waters that meet standards for toxicity, per the UN. As was concluded by David Cameron, the former Prime Minister of England, or the UK, and Omar Shakir, the Israeli agent for Human Rights Watch, these conditions are tantamount to the world's largest open-air prison. And Israel knows this. They know fundamentally that the bombing offensive that they have enacted since October has been engaged in such ways to create even more torturous conditions for an almost exclusively civilian population, and it has inevitably resulted in the most torturous and painful deaths within the world's largest open-air prison. Overwhelmingly so, 65% of the excess deaths since October of Palestinian civilians in Gaza have been found to have come from non-fatal injuries from these bombings, those who did not die from immediately in those strikes. We know a civilian population's ability to respond and recover to mass violence is determined by the political, economic, and infrastructural conditions within which such violence occurs. Now, to be clear, this is not suggesting that some civilian life is more valuable than others, that some deserve greater justice than others. But under the barbarous conditions of the Israeli blockade and occupation of Gaza, Palestinian lives are being lost in far more tragic and terrifying ways than we can even comprehend as Americans.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. You're over time. Thank you. Nadia Rashid?
My name is Nadia Rashid. I believe I'm Ward Eight, 5609 Northwest 111th Street. And I think there's a lot of us, can you just raise your hand if you're here for a ceasefire? Yeah. So I think there's a lot of us that really care about this, and I've spoken before about how, you know, a ceasefire is not just, it doesn't really matter who you support, Israel or Palestine, it's kind of irrelevant. The thing is, more people are going to continue dying if we don't do something about it on both sides. And personally, I believe that every human life is extremely valuable, and I don't believe that any loss of life is acceptable if it can be avoided. And I know that some of you are probably thinking, what does this have to do with Oklahoma City Council? Well, you may not know this, but Oklahoma sends over $25 million in tax money to Israel every year. That's money that's coming from us Oklahomans. We go to work, we work our jobs, the government taxes us, and they use that money to buy weapons. I mean, we have a weapons manufacturing facility right here in Oklahoma, in McAllister, Oklahoma. I don't know if y'all know that. And the amount of money that Oklahoma and Oklahoma City is sending to Israel to buy weapons with has increased by almost three times the amount of money since October 7th. I believe the last number that I saw was $63 million of taxpayer money that has been sent to a foreign government for something that the people of Oklahoma don't stand for. In Oklahoma, we have something that I think you've all heard of called the Oklahoma Standard, which is when there's terrible disasters like tornadoes, Oklahomans stand up for each other, and they take care of each other. I've seen this my entire life. I'm a lifelong Oklahoman, and I have seen disaster strike time and time again, every storm season and every year, Oklahomans pull together and take care of each other, because we understand that we are a community. And I don't know about y'all, but it seems like there's a lot of people here that care about other people, even outside of our community. And I think a lot of us just think that it's completely insane for us to be sending our money to kill people, when here in Oklahoma, we work- when here in Oklahoma, we work so hard to try to take care of our Oklahomans. Furthermore, I work with the homeless population a lot, and the crisis right now that is going on is insane. I meet people every day who are severely disabled. They're in wheelchairs, they walk with walkers, they have mobility issues. They can't even get up the step into the homeless shelter. And why are we sending? We are sending so much of our Oklahoma City taxpayer money to foreign governments to do whatever they want with it when we need to be solving crises like that here in our own state. We Oklahomans care about other Okies. And when we're driving around and we see people on the side of the road everywhere, it's heartbreaking. We don't want to see this happening to people in our own state. And I think that we should be spending our money. I would like to call for a resolution supportive of a ceasefire from the Oklahoma City Council.
Thank you. Jeremy Moses, Jeremy Moses.
I'm glad I was told this was down here. Jeremy Moses, Ward Five, One-Two-Two-Zero-Five, South Western Avenue, Apartment Twelve-Twelve. I am here today because last week, I attended, for the first time ever, the RTA of Central Oklahoma meeting. And it was there that I learned that it is recommended that the Airport Alternative Three be removed from consideration for the airport line, because it overlaps significantly with the MAPS Four BRT. I just checked to see what the travel time would be for somebody who lives on the south side and is four, would have to travel to the Santa Fe Depot to then transfer from the MAPS Four BRT to the airport line? Forty-four minutes. Forty-four minutes. That is an eternity when you're talking about trying to make a flight. Or, for some, trying to get to work. I will not stand for that. It is my view that we need to have connectivity on the south side between MAPS Four BRT, south, the south line, and the airport line, at the very least, on the south side. I don't believe it should be necessary to go all the way downtown and then backtrack all the way back out to the airport when the destination is probably within three miles of your home. I don't believe that should be necessary. And I call on this council, which appoints people to the RTA, mind you. At least, I believe that's how it works. I, I might be wrong. But I call on this council to make sure that we maintain that connectivity on the south side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jaclyn Shelton.
Howdy, hi, my name is Jaclyn Shelton, Two-Six-One-Seven, Southwest Sixty-Third Place, Ward Five, let's go, okay? I'm nervous. Over the almost past one hundred and forty-five days, the people of this world have seen unthinkable horrors played out on our phones. We have seen people crushed, blown up, shot, starved, and displaced. But this is not just occurring in our phones. This is happening in real time in Palestine, and these people are real. Growing up, we learned about the Holocaust and learned about the devastating atrocities that were committed, and the whole world vowed never again. And yet, it is happening again to mothers, fathers, brothers, and sisters. To prevent, to pregnant women who are run over alive by bulldozers and men who are being kidnapped and blindfolded and shamed. To a three-month-old baby who, who are being bombed and starved, and teenage boys and girls who are being shot at point-blank. I find it extremely concerning that so many in our city go without housing, food, and proper health care, as well as living with insufficient infrastructure, while our Oklahoman politicians continue to support investing in a foreign occupying force that receives free health care, subsidized housing, and free higher education with our Oklahoma tax dollars. This is a problem that affects Oklahoma City constituents. There are many steps that must be taken to undo all the things that have been done and so many things that cannot be undone. But one place to start is for local governments like this city council to call for a permanent ceasefire and immediate humanitarian aid to be allowed into Gaza. I implore everyone on this city council to put yourself in their shoes, lead with humanity, and call for a ceasefire. Thank you so much.
Angel Castillo.
Good morning, Angel Castillo. I live in Three-Thirty Northeast Second Street in Bricktown. So some of my previous colleagues have already made the moral case for supporting a ceasefire in Gaza. Oklahoma City in doing so would join other cities such as Detroit, Michigan, Minneapolis, Atlanta. Cities all over the United States are reflecting the wills of their constituents by passing resolutions for this. Perhaps the challenge might be, okay, how do we, how do we reach out to our conservative colleagues on this issue? I contend that there is a conservative case even for supporting a ceasefire, because conservatives like to say that they are all for small government. Well, I can't think of anything more big government than America's military involvement all across the, all across the world, especially in the previously cited financial and technical and logistical contributions to international conflicts, especially in Israel and Gaza. So I believe that if we want our conservative colleagues and conservative legislatures to prove any kind of dedication to political principle or logical consistency, they should disapprove of what is most certainly big government spending in foreign conflicts when, as some of my other colleagues have said, money could be best spent here. For example, if, just across the block, while I was walking here this morning, I saw multiple unhoused people camped outside the library waiting for it to open, because it's one of the few public spaces they have any access to. And I can tell you, one of the thoughts that I had of that image wasn't, yeah, this will be solved by more bombs in Israel. No, so that's the end of my comment, thank you.
Rachel Lonteen.
Hello, Mayor, city council members, thank you so much. I live in Eight-Zero-Zero-Eight, Northwest Seventh Street. I believe that's in the third or fifth ward, sorry, I know it's like right on the line there. And I've come today, as well as many others, to state the same thing that we are asking for you guys to put forward an approval for a ceasefire, or at least show backing that Oklahoma City is in wanting that to go forward. I know that right now, we are looking for a ceasefire. Talks have been going on for a long time. Biden just released that they're hoping by Monday that we would have a more solid concrete on this. And I just wanted to also show my support, as well as everybody else, in taking part of this ceasefire. You guys have heard the statistics from them, so I won't lumber it down by adding those as well. So thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. James Cooper, for mentioning the LGBTQ thing. Thirty-Ninth Street has seen enough blood over the years, and we are over that as well. That is something that I would like to bring up in another council meeting, but I do appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Yasmin Abouista.
Hi, my name is Yasmin. I live at One-Four-Six-One-Six, Yorkshire Lane, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Before I start, I'd like to ask as councils and all of our people that are speaking to be paid attention to, paid attention to, and have given the decency of being listened to as your constituents. My grandparents are refugees of nineteen forty-eight. I'm Palestinian-American, and I'm one of the many, many Palestinians living here in the diaspora. I'm a senior in high school and a community organizer and activist. For the past four months, we've witnessed the slaughtering, the starvation, and the mass amputations of limbs of children, women, and men. We've seen a complete collapse of the health care system. At the hands of Israeli military, hospitals have been seized, as well as schools and refugee camps. We've seen all of this through our phones and social media. But what I've seen here in Oklahoma is the lack of humanity and the rise of anti-Palestinian, Islamophobic rhetoric. Your constituents have been targeted, bullied, and hate-crimed. As Palestinians, my, as a Palestinian, my identity should never be a crime. My identity should never be debated. And most importantly, my identity should never have been something that anyone is killed for, whether it is here or in Oklahoma. Cities across the United States have passed ceasefire resolutions demanding that the unlawful mass killings must come to an end. They demand the food must be sent to starving children. They demand that there is no place for antisemitism, Islamophobia, or xenophobia. Oklahoma City in particular has a duty to pass ceasefire resolutions, as Oklahoma plays a significant part in the ongoing genocide in Gaza. Our state treasurer has invested over sixty million dollars in Israeli bonds while our people die from homelessness and starvation and can't find a job or have to ration their insulin because of our health care system. Mayor Holt, you were elected the president of the conference of mayors. It is your responsibility to show that the citizens of the United States does not stand for the slaughtering of innocent indigenous people, it does not support the mass displacement of indigenous people to their land. Oklahoma has already been complicit in genocides in our history. In fact, the very land that we stand on right now carries the blood of thousands of martyrs. We cannot continue to stand for more innocent lives being killed or any more land being stolen. That is why Oklahoma City has a duty to protect and serve its people and pass a ceasefire resolution, pass resolutions condemning antisemitism, Islamophobia, and xenophobia. I hope you all find it in your hearts to condemn the unlawful killing of civilians and work with your constituents to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian Jaber, or Tabor.
Hello, my name is Vivian Jaber. I live at Six-Four-Zero-Zero Northwest Expressway, which I believe is in Ward One. I'll start by thanking Councilmember Cooper. Your words really resonated with me, because I am a Palestinian, I'm an American, and I am an Oklahoman who's proudly raising two young children in this community. And we're facing the same fears as I watch the dehumanization and the genocide of Palestinians, both in Oklahoma and in Palestine. I'm here to urge this council to address the urgent matter impacting our community. Arabs, Muslims, and Jews in America are experiencing increases in hate crimes of up to three hundred percent. In October, a six-year-old Palestinian boy in Chicago was stabbed, death in a hate crime. In November, three Palestinian students in Vermont were shot at for speaking Arabic. In January, pro-Palestinian students were assaulted with chemical weapons at Columbia University. In February, a young father was stabbed for flying a kofea from his car in Palestine, a kofea like this. I fear for the safety of my community and my children, and I urge the city council to take action against the rise of hate by calling for a ceasefire in Palestine and the end of violence on both sides. Passing a ceasefire resolution reaffirms that our city values all human life and sends the message that Oklahoma stands against antisemitism, Islamophobia, and xenophobia. Passing a ceasefire resolution in the heart of the country calls on our national and international leaders to follow in Oklahoma's footsteps and prioritize diplomacy and dialogue in ending this devastating loss of life, because we cannot bomb our way to peace. Thank you for your dedication to protecting our community, and I urge you to pass a ceasefire resolution.
Ronnie Kirk.
My name is Ronnie Kirk. My address is Twenty-Three, Twenty-Eight, North Missouri. In three years, we've had a lot of changes. Oklahoma, number one supplier of marijuana. Open carry for guns. The laced gummies with THC, and the kids are getting them too. Last week, you know, in Dell City, they had the first shooting at the school this summer. You had a thousand people running at the same time. When we had the State Fair, our chief of police had eight hundred police security at the fair. They had a shooting. Couple of weeks after that, a young lady got behind the crowd going in to a building. She didn't wait to go through security, although, security. She dropped down, kind of got behind the crowd, shot her way through, killing six people. And just last week, Joel Osteen, at his church in Dallas, a lady that went there with a seven-year-old kid, started shooting up the place. And then the Super Bowl, they had over a hundred thousand people running at the same time for just a shooting. So y'all gotta do something about them guns, the marijuana, the THC for the kids. Everybody's saying it's not for the kids, but y'all know them kids are getting that gummy barrels. So we need to get together, try to do something about these guns where we can enjoy this city, because no place is safe. No place, not even here. They don't read that little sign coming through, say, no weapons. They don't care about that. Thanks.
Julie McCoy. Julie McCoy, okay. Casey, oh, Damon, okay.
Hi, my name is Julie McCoy, and I live on Ten-Three-Twenty Paisley Road. I know where I live, I just moved there not too long ago, so I'm getting used to address. First of all, I appreciate every one of you and your place here and your voice and your representation of us. I feel like when y'all are voted in, y'all are here to represent, protect us from things that want to come. I appreciate all the people that are finding, Mr. Mark, a place to come here and find home. However, it concerns me where they're placing their companies, their venues, whatever it is. Just like you said, sometimes they get placed where the people are most vulnerable. And I would like, first of all, to be able to, it's been a challenge to be able to talk to our ward member. I'm really sad Mrs. Peck have to leave, trying to get a hold of her. A bunch of us have been trying to get a hold of her, and I understand she has a lot of stuff going on in her life. She sent out a mass email. I would like to request if, could we meet with another ward member? Could some of us get together and a group of us meet? I know I went to the zoning committee of PUD nineteen eighty-three, and they said we could have another city hall meeting. We haven't had that yet. A lot of people weren't aware of that. So we would like to be able to speak with our ward person. If, if she's got life going on, I would like to have another person that could represent her that we could speak with. Because we would like to, as she sent out a mass email, we would like to have our voice be able to speak to her on our position in this case. I know sometimes weight is on people, oh, on people to have to, get to know people, to be able to have an audience with them, to have, you know me, and people get wined and dined and have a larger, I don't know the word I'm thinking of, favor, and we would like to have that favor for us as well.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm trying to think of everything, this is, yes. That's the main thing, is we want to be able to talk to our, because we voted for some of you, and we would like to be able to be able to visit with you, one-on-one. So if there's a way for us to be able to do that, please let us know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Casey Whitfoot.
My name is Casey Whitfoot, and I live at 1209 Edinburgh Drive. I was legally notified on February 14th that on April 9th, you would be voting to put the Sunset Amphitheater 350 feet from my backyard. And I think this short notice is unacceptable. I've lived in my home for 13 years. The thing that we love the most about our home is our backyard, and if you vote to allow them to build this amphitheater, it is going to destroy the quality of my family's lives. Having concerts during the week is unacceptable because it will disturb our sleep. Many people go to sleep before 10:30 because they have work and school. When we bought our homes, we did not sign up to have noise equivalent to a train running through our backyards without the horn, as it was described in the commissioners' meeting on January 11th. So, I ask all of you to reject the PUD 1983 to prevent concerts from going late into the evening during the week, keeping our community from getting sleep, because there is no one to enforce this curfew. I don't know if y'all are aware, but the area is Mustang Public Schools with Yukon Addresses with Oklahoma City Utilities. So, calling the police and get a response has always been a problem for us. It just doesn't happen. So, there's no one going to hold this concert venue accountable and fines. They're just going to pay them and play on. Noise pollution is not the only concern I have, but also the low frequencies that are not easily controlled, that will vibrate the inside of my home along Sarah Road. This is something that needs to be addressed. I would like to propose that notes live pay to soundproof our homes as a form of mitigation to stop the bass and the sound of 12,500 people screaming from across the street. Noise is very serious, as the former U.S. Surgeon General William H. Stewart said, "Calling noise a nuisance is like calling smog an inconvenience." This is not the Oklahoma way. We put children, people, and community before million-dollar companies and tax revenue. And I hope that you all will take into consideration what I've shared today and do what is best for the people who've put their trust in you when they elected you into the positions that you hold today. Thank you.
Kristin Bruce.
Hello, my name is Kristin Bruce, 1601 Birkenhead Road. Thank you for serving on our city council. This is a heavy job. Hearing everyone is a heavy job. Thank you. I protest the approval of PUD 1983, the 12,000-seat Sunset Amphitheater being built near any residential houses. A vote to rezone is a vote to approve this location. So, what are complaints neighbors have who live near other amphitheaters? Near Hayden Home Amp in Bend, Oregon, an 8,000-seat capacity, three miles away, a resident said, "We don't hear vocals. We hear and feel a low vibrating bass that permeates the entire house. It's almost unbearable." Near Round Rock Amp, 6,000-seat, from four miles away, a resident could feel the vibrations enough that his children couldn't sleep. Near Mid-Florida Credit Union Amp in Tampa, Florida, 20,000-seat, at half a mile away, residents had to endure 10 hours of a concert from a festival, and they could hear talking, so much so that when the man walked out his front door, he said, "The first thing I heard was F this." He continued to say concerts continued, preventing him to get good night's sleep. Near Orion Amp in Alabama, 8,000-seat, at one and a half miles, a resident said, "I like concerts. I just don't want them on someone else's schedule. They're keeping him up. He can't sleep, and he can't do his job the next day." Near Ascend Amp in Nashville, 6,800-seat, from a mile away, a resident wrote, "On the night I wrote this, someone's playing, and inside the house, the windows closed. It's so loud, it interferes with watching TV." Near Brushy Creek Amp, 12,000-seat, people as far as 15 miles away were disturbed enough by the noise to call and complain. Other complaints include, "I can't enjoy my backyard," or "Escape into the house because of window rattling noises," "Businesses disrupted by daytime sound checks," "Affecting the quality of life because they can't enjoy their weekends, their home, their kids, their friends." This type of venue is unacceptable near people's houses, including all of yours' houses.
30 seconds remaining.
Why is this not, amp not being proposed near Heritage Hills or Nicholas Hills or Glandia? I think the complaint would be massive, because it's obvious that it's going to be a terrible neighbor. All of you need to see the location with your eyes, and aerial picture does not do it justice. So, please use common sense and factual evidence and vote no to notes live in order to say yes to Oklahoma's families, sleep, health, and peace. Thank you.
Kirsten Phelps Hayes.
Hello, my name is Kirsten Phelps Hayes. I live at 420 South Fourth Street. That's in Yukon. However, I drove up here with a couple of my friends back there to talk about Palestine and what is currently happening in Gaza and Rafa. A couple days ago, a man by the name of Aaron, he lit himself on fire in front of a, sorry, the embassy, to protest against the genocide in Gaza. And when he did so, as he was burning on the ground and screaming in pain, an IDF soldier pointed a gun at him. This is the second time that this has happened, where someone has lit themselves on fire in state of protest. It is disgusting. People in Gaza are eating bird feed. They are eating donkey feed to try and survive, because Israel is cutting off communication and food resources for them. This is disgusting to watch. The only thing that we can do, we can't even donate, because it's not going to Gaza. Israel, we are funding Israel. They are genociding Gazans. This is literally, as this person back here mentioned, this is like watching the Holocaust happen, except we have access to watch it on our phones. But what can we do about it? We have to wait for our cities to call for a ceasefire, yes, but at the same time, it is devastating to wake up in the morning knowing that I have the privilege to lay in bed and sleep peacefully while these people are getting bombed ruthlessly, daily, nightly. I would just like to say, Mr. James Cooper, thank you for mentioning the LGBTQ and the 50 bills that have been introduced to basically eradicate us. It's, it's hard to describe what I'm feeling at this moment and what I would like to talk about, because there's a lot. I have a lot on my mind. However, one thing is to stop downplaying what is happening right now. A lot of people are trying to convince you that Hamas started this and that that means that Gaza deserves to be bombed, because Hamas shot at Israel once. When this occupation has been happening for well over 70 years now, they have been murdered. Girls are being raped by IDF soldiers. They are being raped. They are being defecated on their faces. They are dead, and IDF soldiers still have the audacity to defecate on them. They were hiding children's bodies in ice cream trucks. It is disgusting what's happening, and there needs to be a ceasefire now. From river to sea, Palestine will be free. Thank you.
Michael Washington.
Horseshoe, wonderful guests. I call you guests because we do own this. To you wonderful people who came out to speak, thank you all for the ceasefire request. Let me say, I'm going to dedicate the first 20 seconds to a word of silence in hopes that the ceasefire is able to come about. So, please, if you would grant me that wish and request. I think you young people should give yourselves a hand once again. Oh, but now it's Michael's turn. We know that you horseshoe people have heard about this debacle that's about to be spread in Dale City. The residents there do not want this new jail built there, because it's bound to disrupt an otherwise peaceful, loving community. I stand firmly with those folks, because they have a right to not have an influx of danger, madness, chaos, and any other negative you want to give it. Before anything can be done, though, it must be passed through this wonderful horseshoe guest that I'm standing before now. Why? Because you are going to have the authority to rezone that area of the state in Dale City for the jail to be placed there. I want you all to think about, if you were living in Dale City, would you want it there? No, you would not. The powerful cities here in the state of Oklahoma don't want it there. Nichols Hills, put it over there, boy, because it's somewhere in the opulent side of the communities. Why is that not on the discussion of the tables? Because the powers that be say, don't even bring our names up. That's why.
30 seconds remaining.
This is very discriminatory, more my say that 30 seconds runs quickly when I'm trying to discuss things, but you're right. In closing, we just had another recent death in jails. All right, you all, when we're going to stop it and take full control and measures? You people have the authority to create an independent investigation into these, because your inmates are on loan, your people on loan to accounting that you contracted with. Thank you all very much, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Carl Edkin. Carl Edkin.
I'm Carl Edkin. I live at 10412 Fairfax Lane, Yukon. I am here to speak in protest of the Sunset Amphitheater. I implore you to simply drive there, down Sarah Road, Two-Lane Road. And this giant amphitheater is going to be built right across from our neighborhood, directly to the east. There is another one, Westbury North, that is southeast, and there is two large housing additions being built directly to the south. Babies at home won't be able to sleep from all this noise. Kids won't be able to sleep. People that work the night shift won't be able to sleep. Our veterans, myself, I don't have PTSD, but I know people in the neighborhood that do, will have trouble with all this noise. I implore you to simply drive through there to see where they're going to be built. There isn't any noise blocks that's going to be able to be built, like the highways do on the sides of the neighborhood. They build high partitions to help block the noise. There's nothing that's going to be built here, nothing. We have plenty of venues in Oklahoma City. We have the Paycom, we have Cox. We also have the, the outdoor concert venue that Oklahoma City built. We also have the Zoo Outdoor Amphitheater. There are a lot of Indian casinos that have concerts. We don't need this in our neighborhood. We don't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the residents who have signed up to speak today, which brings us down to 14 a German, and we are adjourned.